We'll start tonight's meeting. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. This is the July 1st of the United States of America. The two Republic, the Constitution stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite in justice.
Apologize for running late in our previous meeting. Remind everybody to please silence their phones and any other talk voices that they may have. We have council members that are attending this meeting via Zoom due to health concerns and so forth, so we're respecting their wishes to meet remotely. I believe we have Attorney Rick Hall on the phone with us. I don't think he can hear us or not, but he's with us for the remainder of the portion of the meeting.
I can hear you. Right.
Okay. Is there anybody an opportunity to review and read the minutes from our July 17? If so, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Hold a second. And if anybody would prefer that I wear my mask or the council wear their mask, please state so. I just think it's going to be easier to hear.
Until?
Until. We're also passing on some minutes that were already approved previously, but we're not signed by everybody. So those that have not signed them, please do so tonight. If you're here, obviously. I guess I want to go to parties.
I think I've seen you several times. I didn't think you'd ask you to sign.
Both council members that aren't here, please be sure to stop into Jane's office and sign the minutes. So we'll get that taken care of.
Yes, sir.
Is there any mail that anybody would like to share with the body of the council? Anything from our calling attorney?
I don't have anything.
We do not have any committee reports. Christian Naylor.
I don't know. You need to act on it yet tonight. Jane, maybe you can help me with this one. Matt, what we chose to do today. The Health Department, the commissioners unanimously agreed with some of the problems and, I'm sorry, some of the problems that have been existing down in the Health Department with staffing and workload. And the Health Department has never per se had any leadership as far as office administration or anything like that, anyone that ran the office, so to speak. So Dr. White has been very frustrated for quite some time with this. And he has come up with some, he had come up with the idea, well, every, almost every Health Department in the state of Indiana has an administrator full-time. And he's very, he was very reluctant to even ask for that because he knew the finances of the Health Department and the situation. And so he and, he had come up with the idea and had asked Matt if Matt would be interested in serving as the administrator over the whole department down there. Matt agreed to that, and the commissioners sent a unanimous responsible or request to the council that you consider or you allow us to go ahead with making Matt the administrator down there. He is not seeking any more allowance to his salary. He's willing to do this to try to get the Health Department back on track, get their finances, their revenue back up and so on and so forth without compensation. We felt that there wasn't any problems with that as far as with the council. But I think legality-wise, it's just a formality that the council needs to, we're asking the council to agree with our wishes to change the job or add that to his job description. We do have a job description of the administrator, what Dr. White would like for us to enter as a job description. And we voted to today to add that to Matt's title with the understanding that we needed the council's graces as well. But Matt's number one opportunity, or number one priority right now is to try to get their revenue sources back up, resources back up. They're currently working on a couple of grants that can easily come to the Health Department. They just need to make that effort. Their efforts are going to be priority one to get back to vaccination clinics. We have lost tremendous amount of revenue, tremendous amount of revenue for the Health Department by not having our health clinics three times a month. So his number one goal is that. His number two goal is to get back to a service-oriented Health Department and taking care of the public.
I didn't hear it.
So it's no additional cost, it's just a change in designation?
Changing the description. The description of his job. So I really like for the, I encourage the health, or the council to concur with us and go along with that because I, we as commissioner, Board of Commissioners, really think this is going to help turn our Health Department around.
I am a part of it. Is there, is there a motion to?
I just want, like, the nurse, I always thought the nurse was like the leader of the group down there, but that's not so.
That is not so. There's a county health nurse, there's a county, what's his new job description? Sanitary, environmental?
Environmentalist.
Environmental specialist.
Specialists. Environmental specialists. They don't, in the past, they were on equal playing fields. There's no administrative assistant or administrative director, there's no, Dr. White is a part-time health doctor, so he wasn't there on a daily basis to set daily schedules and so on and so forth. And, you know, it's just like he was talking today, we could easily put on a full-time health doctor, county health doctor, and that'll cost you six figures, but we can't afford it. And so we just think this is our best solution. We've got to have somebody in charge. And it's funny because when, and Dr. White mentioned this, when Terry was down there, she kind of run things. She took the bull by the horns and she managed things. Well, we've never had that since Terry retired. And so each part of that agency has kind of done their own thing, went off and done their own thing, and there hasn't been anybody reining that back in. So we hope that through this move, we can improve our management of the Health Department at the same time drastically increase our revenue sources and the strength that the Health Department once had. We hope to improve that.
I think we're, we're going to make a motion.
I'll make a motion, but what are you going to call it?
It's, his job description is going to be.
Administrator and environmental specialist for Fayette County Health Department.
There's a chairman?
I wrote it down, Sully.
I'll second it. This is Holly.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor to approve the new position for the Health Department. All those in favor will do so by roll call vote.
I can win discussion first.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
I'm glad personally to see Dr. White taking this step because in our current situation in here, I would have thought Fayette County Health Department had been in the forefront with articles in the paper, directions for different organizations and stuff, and they've virtually been silent. I can go on Facebook and see Lane County, Henry County, Franklin County, every day with stats and where things are going, what businesses are doing, and I've heard nothing of it. Maybe it's different in town, but in the county, I went to their website the other day and also their Facebook page. It's hard to find a name about COVID even on the website. So I'm glad Dr. White has taken this, and I hope it does bear some fruits and improve their current situation.
John, in their defense, and I somewhat concur with you, and that's, some of our discussion points have been through all this, is about the forefront and whatnot. But in their defense, Matt has almost reported at every commissioner's meeting on the current status of the situation in the county with COVID and whatnot. So they have tried to be out front as much as possible, but without leadership, it's been difficult down there in the office to get full cooperation.
And Matt Eatonen attended the drug collection meeting.
Yeah. But I do concur with you somewhat, John. I think they should have been much farther out in the public. And that's what we're trying to do with this.
Any further discussion? Now proceed with roll call vote.
Councilman Winta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Recker-Paton?
Yes.
Councilman Brockman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dunn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nabi?
Yes.
Councilman Clark?
Yes.
Seven, nothing. In favor? Got your new position?
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Along those lines, just wanted to follow up with the mayor, the council president, the city council president, David Nutty, and Brad Colton about the possibility of combining a county engineer, city engineer, it was discussed. Nothing will be done on it this year. They're going to examine it further. There are some advantages to us having that position, the fact that we get 40,000, 40,000 towards it. And we used to have it with Warren Setoff when he was the surveyor. He occupied that position as well, and we got 25, just 20, 20 in reimbursement for that. So it's not something we have to talk about or discuss tonight, but I just wanted to have a discussion with the mayor. He invited us to be part of that. Probably makes sense to further explore that or talk about maybe during the budget hearings and, because if we want to do that, we want to do it by the end of January. We want to have that in place, Sully.
Yes, before the end of January.
Before the end of January so we can get the grant money for that. Otherwise, it's kind of a moot point after that. So there'll be more discussions in regards to that later on down the road, but I just wanted to let you know that I did talk to the mayor about that, or he invited us to be part of that meeting. On your new business, refinancing debt resolution. Is that his, Mr. Hall?
Thank you. So the county has outstanding building corporation bonds issued in 2012. And at that time, interest rates were around three and a half percent. The current interest rate environment now between one and one and a half percent. So it has been presented to the county by a couple of different bond underwriters that there would be an opportunity to refinance the county's 2012 bond and save $200,000 or more for the county in the next seven years, which is a remaining term of the 2012 bond. So this is similar to refinancing your home mortgage and debt. The county, the annual payment would be to do, the terms of the debt stays the same, but because of the lower interest rate, there would be less than $100,000 for the county to have to use to pay debt service on the new refinancing bond. So this morning, the commissioners authorized the refinancing and have that Baker Philly, Jake Sumner in particular, evaluate hopeful for the refinancing and give the death rate to the county. In order for the refinancing to occur, the county council also has the, and that's the resolution that you have before you, which I'm happy to explain in detail. And then the council also approves of the building corporation approving. And we would come back, see the county determine the rate and amount of savings where you would be obligated to actually do the refinancing. So this puts the approval in place and allows Baker Philly to work with potential persons to fix the rate, but not update the county to go forward in the amount of the interest rate. Mark didn't give orders and the savings would go away. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody in council have any questions for Mr. Hall? If not, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So the resolution before you, I authorized the refinancing and it also approved the amendment to be, so the building corporation actually issued the bond in 2012 and then issued the new refinancing bond. And the county pays lease rentals under the fee that course bond would be non-debt service on the outstanding bond. So since the new bond, you have less debt service, lease rentals will be reduced. And the council's resolution authorized the amendment, so that means we would like to do reduce of debt payments.
Okay. Let's hope we approve. I think I tangled up in the minutes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the debt service, the payment we make includes interest too. So that would, that's what would lower the debt payment then. I didn't know how the debt payment was set each year, so it's just based on the loan and the interest rate.
Yeah, 230-year mortgage, each payment has a principal repayment component and an interest component. And the interest rate on the outstanding bond is about three and a half percent. And the current interest rate environment is close to one point two.
Rick, can you hear me?
Yeah.
You said we saved $200,000?
Yeah.
Over what period of time?
Between now and 2028, January 1st, 2028, until the whole process here, probably.
Okay. Is there a fee to reduce it? Like when you get a new mortgage, you have a fee?
That was my next question. Is there a fee associated with the?
Refinancing.
Refinancing?
If the 200,000 was a net after the.
Because our fees, there would be legal fees, there would be Baker Philly fees, there would be an underwriter's fee, there would, there would be a fee for your local attorney and patient to refinance it. $200,000 after all those fees are paid. So then it would be, it would be net of those fees of $200,000.
So the $200,000 is a net?
Yeah.
Okay. I guess I didn't hear that earlier. Thank you.
I make a motion that we.
We move forward.
Okay. You have a second?
Second.
You have a second? Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Winta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Recker-Paton?
Yes.
Councilman Brockman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dunn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nabi?
Yes.
Councilman Clark?
Yes, and would you be able to mail us a copy of the resolution?
Yes.
Thank you.
And if you, council members at home that are slow, you can just type it like we just did ahead of time, it'd be great. We kind of accidentally signed it by. Thank you, Holly. We got a new addition to our meeting tonight with a welcome addition, which is Clint Harden. He's the new EMS director. Where are you going?
On down.
Of course. He's finally left already. Clint reached out to me early on when he was appointed as the director of EMS and asked if it would be okay if he gave a report on EMS finances, and I, of course, welcomed that because we never have gotten that before.
We'd love to see it.
Well, thank you. One of the things that I had talked to the mayor about, actually in my interview, was that I wanted to improve our communication, even within the department, with the public and with all stakeholders. You guys are a stakeholder, you guys are a major stakeholder. So my goal, I had sat down with the mayor and Commissioner Naylor pretty early on, and I said, how about once a quarter? And this was in February. Okay, that sounds good. And then March hit and the rest went downhill. Everybody went to virtual meetings and it was just a mess. So this, I apologize for just now getting here to you guys. I have, I have some things, if I can just bust a handout around that way, I guess. So there's a lot of information here. I'm not going to go through it page by page. This is what I put together as a, the 2019 year-end report for the city council and the board of works. And I put this together in January, February. So there is some stuff in here that's maybe a little dated. Inside the front cover, you will see our latest financials. These are actually through the end of June, halfway, halfway point in the year. July's are not finished yet, you know, how that goes. It takes a while to get everything in and tabulated, but this will get you through the first half of the year. I was just going to kind of do a real brief summary on the packet I gave you. First of all, I figured that I'm kind of your counsel, your liaison to EMS, so maybe y'all know a little bit about me. So there's kind of a thumbnail resume in there near the beginning, outlining background of Fayette County EMS, kind of when we started, why we started, why EMS is in the United States. Fayette County EMS actually predates what is described as EMS in the United States. We were founded in 1956. Most EMS didn't start until the 70s, so we've got some of that. A billing overview, our billing company that we, that we work with has an overview of what they provide to us, not only billing, but also compliance, Medicare, Medicaid, insurance. It is a daunting task. It's something I would not want at all to deal with. They handle that for us. They're also a great source of information. If I, if I need something, I can ask them. Some of my goals, the compliance team at ABS, some calls and trends are in there, graphs, destination reports, patient age summary, breakdown by day of the week. I mean, anything you want to know, if you want to know how many calls we made on Wednesday between 10:00 and 11:00, I can dive that deep into our computer system and I can tell you. I'm not going to sit here and read figures. I just kind of wanted to be an introduction and if, give you my information. If you have questions, please reach out to me. I would like to come back on a, hopefully quarterly basis. And then if you have questions or just an update, or if you don't, if you don't want to see me that often, then that's fine too. I just want to make myself available to you guys because you do pay, you do pay half the bills. So we're aware of that, and I want to make sure that you guys are involved and informed about what we're doing and how we're doing, so forth and so on.
We appreciate that. One thing I wanted to share that may have shared the months before is last year we did our budget, EMS budget design, it's kind of a trick trying to figure that one out. And now we don't know how to, whether the stars align to get that magical number or what we have to do, but each year we try to do that. This year we came up with a budget, or this flat patch we came up with a budget, and we said, kind of drew a line in the sand and said, that's it, because it seems that our numbers never quite line up with the city side for whatever reason, even though they're supposed to. For whatever reason, previous years they haven't, and it's always been additionals and additionals and additionals, and it kind of kills us. So we kind of put a line in the sand this year and said where we're going to be. Now we had some carryover from last year, like 60-some thousand on top of our budget. We thought it was like 500-some thousand dollars. So we kind of said, once we hit that number, then we're going to, we would ask that you come and ask us for an addition like you would the city council, because we don't, we don't understand sometimes where these costs are going or what they're being utilized for. Now Dale did bring in the gentleman from, was it Oakheart?
ABS.
Brought him in to explain some things, but I think all of us over in council then were, maybe a different picture was painted for us than was actual reality. Would you agree, Dale? And it just, the numbers have just been kind of out of control since then. So we'd like to get it under control, and I really appreciate you taking a step forward to do this, because I think that's going to go a long way towards doing that and help us better understand it, because the city does most of your budget, obviously, for you with, with your pay and all that stuff and the contract negotiation. Now, when the mayor and myself and Dave Nutty were talking from the city council, we did talk about the interlocal agreements, and the one thing we talked about with EMS, and we were going to talk about the 10th, I believe, and the council has no say in it. Just out of courtesy, we've been invited to here, maybe make our pitches to what we'd like to see. It may bear no fruit at all, but it's, this is a good step, I think, for all of us to work together, because those interlocal agreements were, we're all contributing, like you said, you know, it's supposed to be 50%. So I appreciate it. I'm sure most of the council.
We're all glad you're here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'd say, I know it's a lot to digest, and it's reading material if you can't go to sleep, and then if you come up with questions, I'm more than happy to come back and answer those for you, or, you know, if you have a particular topic you guys want approached, how we're responding to XYZ, I'm more than happy to come in and address that as well.
So I had Jane pull the numbers, and we spent so far this year, 394,000. We carried over what?
68,400.
68,400, and we budgeted 450,000. So you kind of know where we're, where we were at. So we're at 510, 518,000. So kind of once we hit that number, we spend that, then we're, we need, we need to explain it, Lucy.
So you said your, your today expenses is, is what?
What we have paid out is 394,096.
Let's see, once again, that doesn't, that, well?
I think it's because of the lag time.
Sure, maybe that is it.
Like, we are just now paying, I think, May or June.
Okay. So.
I think that meeting next week will clear up, hopefully clear up some stuff for us as a council too, so it'll be prior to our budget meeting, so it'll give us some clarity of that.
All right. Does Ema have any questions for me?
No, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our review of levy limits and tax cap limits for you, it's not what it's emailed, is that?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody have a chance to look at that? Any questions? So we've got ordinance here, 2020-02, granting recorder's request to use recorder's perpetuation fund. This is in conjunction with the upcoming.
I'm sorry, can I back you up for a second?
Yeah.
On the review of levy limits and tax cap limits, we are either supposed to make recommendations to the units or say we are not going to make recommendations to the units.
No, typically we've not made the recommendation.
Okay, well, I just want to official on the minutes.
Does anybody want to make any recommendations to the units, or typically we've not done anything?
Now Jane said that the state gets with all the units and talks to them so they pretty much know what to expect.
Yeah. Okay, so we have it on record now.
Can I have a second?
Everybody, council member Clark and Navi and Dunn, y'all good with that?
Yes, sir.
Be so formal.
In fact, I was surprised that the mountain script come out and more than what they did with the current situation anyway.
Yeah, it's, um, let's keep our fingers crossed and stays like that.
Yep.
It'll be good for us. Okay, back to where I jumped ahead. Ordinance 2020-02, granting recorder's request to use recorder's perpetuation fund. Is that, that's for her for the 2021?
Yes, for the 2021 budget.
Okay, okay. The kind of ask that we, should be able, some, some people have perpetual perpetuation funds that they can utilize.
Yes.
And this had to be approved.
But you have to by ordinance. Once she requests that you allow her, you have to make an ordinance to allow that.
So this is the ask that we did to the department heads a couple of months ago, of trying to get their budgets down about 15%, which we know is a tall order and almost probably impossible to do. But one of the things is some, some of these offices have perpetual funds that they can utilize, and as Jane was saying, if we approve it, then we have to put an ordinance in effect to allow her to do so. And is this running for, does this run for one year?
Yes.
Okay, it's just run for one year. That's kind of what we agreed upon. We weren't going to take advantage of the situation and say, well, you did this this year, and, you know, kind of hold your feet to the fire, this, this is all, this is working together.
Do you have an amount, or you just?
I don't have an amount.
So this is meant to have?
I believe it's like 8,950. It'll be part of our budget presentation next week.
7,485 plus 1,465, so it's quite close to what you're saying.
Yeah.
That's just something like, where the county would normally pay it, they're going to use this.
Perpetuation fund to do that. And I was just kind of saying, kind of like a life preserver to us as a county to help our county general funds a little bit. Every, every little thing that we can do in the event, prepare for the COVID, you know, numbers that we may see the shortcoming, which John kind of alluded to, isn't as bad as we maybe originally intended or thought they would be, which is good for all of us, so we're hopefully going to be in a okay situation here. So with that being said, is there a motion to approve ordinance 2020-02?
I make a motion to go ahead and approve ordinance 2020-02, granting the recorder's request to use recorder's perpetuation fund, or would you say for normal budgetary matters?
Yeah.
I'll second you.
You have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by roll call vote.
Councilman Winta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Recker-Paton?
Yes.
Councilman Brockman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dunn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Navi?
Yes.
Councilman Clark?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, we have no, oh, transfers, additional, we have no additional requests. We have transfer requests, courthouse operating fund, 30102 to 20285 to cover supplies in the amount of $10,000.
I can make a motion to approve the transfer request for courthouse operating from 30102 to 20285 to cover supplies.
Second. We have a motion to approve the transfer request for courthouse operating fund for $10,000 from 30102 to 20285. Is there any further discussion?
That's why Jane, as she said, it's not really, it's just a matter of going from one.
Sure.
Because of changes in the state, I guess, just going from one line item to another.
Yes, some of these are just, they're just, so everybody understands that I emailed this to council, but they're, we're not requesting any additional money. It just becomes like to cover supplies, say there are things we in the past paid for out of office supplies, well, state work accounts is getting much more particular, and so something that's technically not an office supply, we had to create an other supply line. So, so some of this is just a, it's just a classification issue, or I gave the example like, we had service accounts where if we paid for, say, an oil change out of a service account, well, if that bill is broken down by so much labor, so much parts, we can't pay for the parts out of a labor account. So we're having to move money, so if we had budgeted $10,000 for oil changes, let's say, well, now we're having to move 5,000 of that into a supply account so we can pay for the labor and the supplies separately and, and keep the more stringent calculators. It's part of the enhanced regulatory audit procedures is what the state calls it, where before they've never really questioned categories as long as your expenditures were what they were supposed to be, but now they are questioning categories and reviewing categories to, to make our books more transparent.
Would it be okay with the council if we just handled these all at one time?
Yes.
And just read through them and.
It's fine with me.
That's what I was going to suggest.
I'd say great minds think alike, but I didn't want to insult you, John. Okay, so courthouse operating from 30102 to 20285 to cover supplies in the amount of $10,000. Deal lift from 20230 to 30303 to pay for parts, $60. County general from 30500 to 20190 for EED batteries, $553.19. Health from 30450 to 20210 to pay for fuel, $500. Prosecutor referral from 30500 to 30303, hot for water, 8297. County general from 30500 to 20290 for other supplies in the amount of $185. So did we, did we originally have a motion?
Yes, Kathy made a motion.
So you'll need to amend your motion, Kathy.
Oh, to, I'll amend the motion, the motion I made for the courthouse.
May I second it?
Yeah, Councilman Brockman did earlier.
I amended, what, to include the courthouse operating from 30102 to 20285, cover supplies for $10,000 to be included with the motion that was just previously made to include all transfer items.
Okay. Your second?
Second.
Your second, do you have a moment? Motion on the floor, floor to approve the transfer request for all the figures for $10,000, $6, $10,000, $60, $553.19, $500, 8297 cents, and $185. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 No, what was his name? We have the 144s. Are there any patron concerns?
Mike, or Jenny, one question on the funds we just did the transfer request on, should we expect in the end, the way out when we start budget work, that some of these accounts are going to be showing up with the figures?
Yes.
Okay.
Some of them should be.
I think the motion would be adjourned.
We want to adjourn.
Second.
You got cookies in the oven, John, or what? All those in favor of adjourned in the meeting, signify by saying aye. So move meeting adjourned.
Aye.